...of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. This is the February 8th, 2018 Town of Monroe Planning Board Workshop Meeting. Noreen, if you would take a roll call vote of the members here.
Anthony Baccaro was absent. Lisa McLeod?
I'm going to grab that mic.
Present.
Rich Triano was absent. Bonnie Franzen?
Present.
James McKnight?
Present.
Present.
Jason Sirwinski?
Present.
And Jeff Manson.
Present.
Thank you.
So we have one, two, three, four, five members. There being a quorum, we'll open the meeting. I'd like to point out the fire exits. There's an exit over by the kitchen, another exit, the main door out that way, and then there's an exit behind me to go to the parking lot. With that, I'd like to start the agenda with Scunnamunk Road subdivision number 15-017. Could you state your name for the record?
Good evening, everyone. My name is John Queenen from Langkantelli Engineering, the engineer for the applicant. I'll be before you tonight with a sketch residential subdivision plan of the existing property located at 262 Scunnamunk Road. Property is located at 1,000 feet to the east of the intersection of North Main Street and Scunnamunk Road. The existing property is about 6.1 acres in size and currently contains an existing residential dwelling that has access from Scunnamunk Road. Our proposal is to construct a new road, and we're proposing 11 single-family residential lots. The property is within the SR10 zoning district. Our lots range in size from 12,000 square feet up to 32,000 square feet. We've provided you with a sketch layout for your consideration. Basically, we're proposing a road matching generally where the existing driveway is today, coming into the property, and then creating a loop around the property. The total length of the road would be just shy of 1,200 feet, with each lot getting access off of that proposed loop road, as we'll call it.
Excuse me one second. There's a PDF and an email if you want to open it. It came in this afternoon. Do you want to send this to both my email addresses? It's in the mail that comes to me, so you should have it. Do you want me to forward it right now?
Oh, I can do that.
It came in after I went home.
So it was from you, Noreen, directly?
It came from the Office of PM Associates at 434.
Kind of tough to see. I don't have, I can't see.
Is that in the planning board one?
No, this is mine.
You wouldn't see it in that one?
Yeah, I think I would. So you didn't send it there?
No, it's in the planning board, but I can forward it right now.
Yeah, why don't you forward it, and then I can get to it easily?
Sorry. I forgot your mail address was in there.
No problem.
Could you generally describe where this property is located?
Sure. The property is located on Scunnamunk Road. It's basically halfway between the North Main Street intersection where the firehouse is, and it's about halfway up Scunnamunk Road before you get to the turn, you know, heading towards Forest.
Okay. So first, I'm just gonna, I'm at the Orange County website.
It's right here.
Let me just try and zoom in. So it's this property right here? It's this one here? Okay. And so right now, there's, at this point, there's one dwelling unit on it?
That's correct. There's one existing house on it.
Okay, and you're proposing a loop road that would then access Scunnamunk Road only with, again, how many dwelling units?
Eleven.
Eleven. I know that there have been some plans for potential development to the north of that site. Are you familiar with that whatsoever?
The larger parcel, yes.
Correct.
Yeah, there was an old subdivision plan, I believe, maybe 10, 15 years ago, that had a cul-de-sac that had single-family lots on it, yes.
Okay. From my perspective, I think we'd want to see whether or not there's potential for interconnections so that if a subdivision in the future ever does come in, that there are two axes out to Scunnamunk. So maybe a little investigation as far as what's happening there. Could you generally describe the terrain? Is it wooded? I'm going to zoom in here and try and bring up an aerial map. In terms of topography, steepness, is it bouldery? Kind of what's the general terrain?
Sure. Generally, the property is low beginning at Scunnamunk Road and rises up to that single-family dwelling you see there in the center. And then from there, the property is generally rolling. It's flat behind the house, and then it's rolling up to two high points, one to the north along this property line here.
Can everybody see the TV? Okay.
So basically, up here to the north, and there's another high point over here on the southern.
Okay.
And then it flattens back out down to the back.
Okay. So in terms of this sketch subdivision plan, this is really to create a yield because with the new regulations, the applicant is also to submit a cluster development plan.
Correct.
So the way the process works now is that they will establish what the maximum yield could be based on a conventional layout, meeting all the requirements, zoning, et cetera. And then they are required to cluster to try and preserve meaningful open space, which we'll have to determine, you know, what that is. And then the planning board makes a decision whether they should pursue the conventional or the cluster subdivision. And again, it depends on part on the characteristics of the land. In general, I don't know if this has been explored with the applicant. Are they wanting to do single-family detached dwellings or cluster? Sort of what's their thought in terms of what they're looking for?
Well, I think they're looking for single-family dwellings. I don't think they would have an objection to clustering those. I certainly would have to go over that with them depending on, you know, how we end up down that road. But I believe their intent is single-family dwellings.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. And just on the survey map that we did give you, we did locate the trees of significant size that's on your plan, as well as you'll see the shading indicated on the plan. That matches the requirement of the code for the 30% slopes.
Okay.
And we have deducted those out of the lot areas in order to get our net lot area.
Okay. So you took into consideration the environmental constraints provisions
Correct.
of the new code?
Correct. The only things on the property that apply, we do not have any wetlands.
Okay.
So we have basically those areas shaded in gray on the map that are the steep slopes, 30% or greater, and the clusters of the trees, which I don't think that applies to the deduction, but we showed it anyway.
Okay. At some point, we would want our EMC to go out, check out the site, see what's there. Certainly, planning board members, if they want to visit the site as well to get a sense of the terrain and what's out there. And I believe we already have consent on the application forms.
Yes.
That the planning board can visit, correct?
Correct.
Someone's living in the dwelling right now?
I believe so, yes.
So I guess we would try and give advance notice before we head out there, and someone's surprised to see people traipsing through the property.
I don't know whether or not in the past, you know, I've met whoever, we set up a time, we all walk it together, however you want to do that.
Okay.
Because sometimes in the past, we've staked out certain features based on this layout for reference points.
Okay.
So however, however you want to do that.
Okay. I would defer to Mark as far as, in the past, have they, you know, what do we normally like to see staked out, you know, road maybe layout, center line, but kind of locations of dwellings? But again, I don't know how far we want to go because they're going to still have to submit a cluster subdivision plan. And so what we really want to see, I think, is going to depend in part on the layout. But...
This was, we submitted this just to get that lot count.
Yeah.
From there, then that'll drive the cluster plan.
Okay.
Two things. I think first, the board would have to decide if they want to go out and review it in the form of the conventional subdivision or wait to look at the determination as to the acceptable lot count, and then look at a cluster plan, and then maybe go walk the site to see which may fit into the terrain more appropriately. Relative to the count of the lots in the conventional subdivision, at minimum, and I don't know what the board's preference is, but how I normally handle the initial plan is that we want to see centerline profiles so that we can, at minimum, determine, first, do all the lots meet zoning, secondly, is the road layout realistic? Can they in fact really construct this road as depicted and meet the town road specs? If they can't meet the town road specs on the configuration shown on this plan, then I don't believe it's a viable lot count plan.
Right.
So I think that's the first item of business for John is to supplement this with a full bulk table showing compliance of each lot and provide us with a profile, centerline profile, for the proposed road to pretty much show us that the conventional layout they're proposing is viable.
That's no problem. I wasn't sure at this point with the new zoning how far, you know, we had to take that. So that's why I'd be happy with that.
I'm seeking some input from the board as well.
Right.
I did forget to mention, just for knowledge, we will be using wells for water supply
Right.
and central sewer.
Okay. Yeah, we'd also want to see, so you're on central sewer?
We're going to be extending the mains to services project.
Is it in the sewer district?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I have a question. On the map that we have up now, where is the existing home?
It would be very light right there.
Right here?
Okay. Is that in the road?
Well, it's going to be torn down.
Oh, okay.
No, but it isn't within the proposed road.
That was my next question. Thank you. And the house that kind of looks like it's going to be in the island by itself, where is the front facing? Like, which side does it face?
The front is facing north.
That way? And then?
This would be the driveway right here.
The stormwater, how far away is that stormwater facility from its, like, property boundary or the backyard? Is there going to be any fence?
Well, depending on the facility that actually gets, you know, chosen and designed, right now, we just showed an easement area for it, and that's about, about 80, 80 to 100 feet away.
A question for Mark with regard to stormwater facilities. Does the town normally allow them to be on individual properties, and then the town can access them via an easement? Or does it prefer for them to be on separate lots?
It's been handled both ways.
Okay.
My preference is that if they create a district, that the area be dedicated to the district. That, to me, is the most permanent method to allow access for maintenance. But I think we need to ensure that for 2018, we understand how the town board prefers handling stormwater districts, if they want to have stormwater agreements where there is easements or if they would want dedications. So...
For a long time, the town was not inclined to create drainage districts, even for substantial subdivisions. But there has been some change in that, and with the new town board, there may be further change again. So at some point, certainly before preliminary approval, when the lot lines would be laid out, you should probably visit the town board and get their feeling as to whether they want to see drainage district.
If it wasn't a district, would it be some kind of HOA or some form of, I mean, how would it be maintained long-term?
Depending upon the size, we have a number of subdivisions in the town where it became the responsibility of the lot owner who bought the land that had the drainage basin on it.
From, so I think it's a town board question. I think from my perspective, I think it should be shared by the, all of the property owners that benefit from that stormwater facility. But, you know, we have to hear from the town board on that, and I don't know.
And in those cases where it has been on an individual lot, we've usually required that an easement be given to the town for the purpose of entering onto the land to maintain the imposing or granting the opportunity to go on without imposing the obligation to maintain.
Okay.
But I agree with Mark, drainage districts, particularly in this day and age of MS4 communities, is the way to go.
Right.
And more especially when a road that's proposed is proposed to be a town road. If it's a private road, many times we've linked the drainage improvements into the private road maintenance agreement, limited number of lots. It tends to work. But when you have a dedicated road, to have that coupled with a single lot, I've seen that cause some real problems.
Yeah. I'm just concerned about long-term maintenance because, again, unless there's some kind of maintenance bond or fee established, it's falling on that one individual. And again, it's there because of the fact that it's the entire development that's generating the name, need for that facility. When you establish that lot, did you deduct the land area for the stormwater facility?
No, because it's a proposed easement. The code only requires if it's existing easements.
All right.
And normally, we would include it within an easement area and offer it to the, you know, to the town for dedication as part of, you know, the whole road dedication.
Right.
Or if the town wants to create the district that...
Yeah, we'll take a look at that as far as what the new regulations state. But I could say intent was that, you know, the stormwater facility shouldn't be included in the minimum lot area because it's not really usable. So I'm just letting you know that.
Okay. Yeah, the way, when I read through that, it was, it had to be an existing easement, not a proposed.
Okay.
But even still, that, the major area...
It's a large area.
Lot 11, and it's almost 3/4 of an acre in size.
Right.
So I think it would still meet the 10,000 square feet.
To the engineer's point with regard to the road layout, you know, we do want to make sure that it's a viable, a real road that would meet spec, including, I don't know if the town, I don't recall if it's in the subdivision regulations or elsewhere, whether there's a maximum length of a dead end, and at what point is that considered a dead end? Because there's only one access out. So I'll defer to Mark to look that up.
Yeah, we'll check that.
Well, in your code, it's 500 feet.
Okay.
So we did, that's why we did the first 300 to the loop. And in our opinion, that's where the cul-de-sac basically ends, because then you can go in either direction around the loop.
Okay. So you're saying that to here, that's 300 feet?
That's correct.
And that your interpretation is that you go to one side, or you go to the other side, that would be the maximum length?
Correct.
Okay. Well, and again, I...
We'll look at it. And I think there might be another restriction in the subdivision regulations that would have the maximum number of lots off of a single access point. So I need to double-check that as well.
Okay.
I'm not that good with the code yet.
Sure. And any board members, if you have questions, please feel free.
It was just mentioned the homeowners association, not that there is one with this development, but bedrooms, it says six-bedroom dwellings, are they town homes? Are they single-family homes?
Single family.
Single-family homes. Is there basements? Like, how, and what's the level of the structure?
Well, at this point in time, we really haven't gone fully into detail on the types of structures. I labeled the six-bedroom dwelling just because it's a larger footprint. It's a 40 by 60 footprint. And as we proceed down the road with, it's really for sewer connection, they run off of the number of bedrooms. So there's really no specific architectural design at this point in time.
Did you choose the maximum number of bedrooms, or are they actually going to be six-bedroom homes?
I just chose the maximum for all of them.
So we don't know how many bedrooms?
It could be, it could be five, could be six, you know, it could be four. But we chose a maximum to base, you know, this application on.
Does our approval, do we have to know, you know, how many bedrooms are going to be?
We would want to know for secret purposes.
Correct.
Because ultimately, the water demand and the wastewater generation, there are calculations that are done to ensure that the demand can be met. I believe that there are, now, I'm not sure for the size of a subdivision, but there are also regulations with regard to water supply, demand, making those determinations. I don't know if any kind of well has to be drilled to make those determinations, but I know the Town of Monroe is more stringent in that regard.
It is. And this is subject to Orange County Department of Health approval, so they would be reviewing the realty subdivision and the wells. As far as the sanitary goes, the, it's a bit easier in the fact that they're not onsite disposal. In fact, they're tying the public sewer. It'll go to Orange County for that as well. So our scope of review is a little less limited, but it is important, I think, that the plan is fully informational on the number of bedrooms. So it's good that he's called it out.
Right.
For the new members, if I could, there's been mention of both a conventional subdivision and a cluster. And just to give you a quick idea what that means, a conventional subdivision would be lots, all of which met all of the bulk requirements, minimum lot size, setback, lot width, lot depth, et cetera. And that would be, once we see a plan that's, the statute says approvable, that would be a conventional layout. If there's going to be a cluster, we take that total number of lots, the yield that comes from the conventional, and then the applicant can propose, and you can massage, a layout which collapses that or reduces the strictures of the bulk table so that you can have a smaller lot, less of a setback, a more shallow yard area, with the goal of preserving open space that has some value to the community. It might mean here that we keep the houses off those high grounds that John pointed out a little while ago. It may be that there's some other area that's equally worthy or more worthy of preservation. But that is the idea of a cluster. A cluster can have no more lots than would be approvable on a conventional basis.
With regard to the trees that you noted, is there an inventory or summary of the DBH and the species?
Yes. I just, I just didn't turn on it. It gets, you lose everything on it. But yeah, we can, we can get that to you.
Okay. And just looking at this property again, what is this white building here?
I believe that's a shed.
Just a shed?
Yes.
And then is, what's back in here? Is that anything?
That, I don't know what that is.
Okay. I don't know if it's called out on the map.
It says, "Chicken coop remains."
Chicken coop remains, okay.
Meaning it's going to stay, or it's the remains of a chicken?
Good question.
And so you're along a utility easement line here, but that's off your property?
Yeah, correct. That's off the southern property.
So no portion of it extends into your...
No, it does. As you see, as the road follows the easement line, it comes in at an angle.
Oh, okay.
So the outside of our right-of-way matches that easement line.
Okay. So we'll want to check also whether or not that affects yield. So that's, that'll be a Mark question.
You know, John, it might be worthwhile to have the entire O and R boundary for their easement depicted, even if it's off the property, just to show the route.
Okay. Yeah, it's there. It's just, I just put, the right-of-way line is right on top of it. So you see the dash that goes out on the lower corner of Scunnamunk?
Yep.
It just runs right up the right-of-way line.
On to the other side.
And it runs right on the property line. I'll just, I'll make it more pronounced.
Okay.
Any questions from the board members? So have you contacted DEC Natural Heritage Program, done any outreach as far as communicating with them?
Not yet, no.
Okay.
No.
I think if you could, it'd be great if you could send a letter to DEC.
Okay.
And again, just to see if there's any species that, as we go through the process, need to be considered.
Sure.
Because if there were, then we may want to evaluate it, plus if the cluster's pursued, it may dictate what would be important open space.
Yeah, the EAF mapper that's generated triggers that a well, so it's already, it's already come up for the bats.
For the bats, yeah. I found that also IPAC, so the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service has an IPAC program, so some species will come in, come up, and you can also contact them. And then sometimes not all the DEC species are generated by the short form or the long form EAF, so it's just good to reach out to them and get their comments. I don't, I think the sooner the better, so we just know what we're dealing with from that perspective. So at this point, this is, you know, again, this is a workshop. This is a sketch.
This is, what we just went through is exactly what we wanted to get out of this. We'll come back with, we'll get the road profile in there, we'll clean up, we'll make it a workable plan to a certain point, and then we'll go through the clustering.
Yeah.
After Mark, you know, goes through.
On the yield plan, John, and again, I'm reaching out to the board to see, because every board requires a different level of a yield plan. Generally, what I've considered the minimum is, as I said, a demonstration of bulk compliance for all the lots, grading and a profile for the road so that we can see that the road meets the individual town's municipal road specifications. Beyond that, there are different levels that Mike said the code or the law says you have to show that it's approvable. I don't know if the law says if it means preliminary approval or final approval. Some boards carry it, I think, a little too far if they really want to have a cluster plan. I'd rather have the focus be on that design.
Right.
But maybe we can get John to just give us that basic information. I think at the next meeting, if there's more information the board needs on the yield plan or the conventional plan, we should probably ask for it then.
Right. I think as far as a yield plan, the things I like to see is, you know, are there crazy driveways that would never meet whatever driveway grade that would be imposed?
And that's where the grading of the road right-of-way comes in. You know, if there's a 30-foot elevation difference between the garage and the road, I wouldn't call that buildable. So those are the things that we'll look for.
Yeah, so it has to be realistic. In this instance, it won't come into play, but if there were wetlands, if you really were, you know, proposing the fill of five acres of wetlands, then I would say, no, that's unlikely to be approvable, you know, by all accounts. So reasonable expectations as to what could be built.
We'll work out, we'll work out the grading. We'll show some basic drainage, make sure that we can get that to work. We'll show the sewer.
Okay.
And I think we'll go from there.
All right.
Maybe drive, when you do the road grading, it might be worthwhile to depict approximate floor elevation and a driveway slope. So each driveway would just have an approximate slope, and that shows that the lot is buildable as it may be.
Yeah.
Which is kind of the spirit of the county's local law as well.
I think also, as far as footprints, whether it's the conventional that gets pursued or the cluster, I think a realistic footprint. You know, I've seen small little boxes that are 40 by 40, you know, when someone's actually going to build a 5,000 or 6,000 square-foot house. You know, ultimately, the limits of disturbance, you know, what's being proposed should be relatively realistically reflected on the, on the map. So these look like they're bigger.
They're on the bigger side, yes.
It's been the board's practice, and John's familiar with it, that we include a condition that doesn't allow any house to be built to a larger footprint than was shown on the plan without coming back with a revised drainage study.
Okay.
So it usually solves that problem.
I think we also incorporated into the zoning house relocation notes. So where you show them is where they're expected to be built with minor variations. And again, especially when we start to get into clusters or larger lots, you know, if we did all this work trying to avoid an area because it's environmentally sensitive and then don't have notes, someone could pull a building permit and put it somewhere entirely different. So that's also new, so you may want to take a look at that.
Okay. Yeah, no, we've, we usually oversize just so we can get through SEAC with the max, and then we don't have to go back. So yeah, that's all.
That's good.
Speaking of SEAC, are there agencies involved? You may want to consider issuing a notice of intent to serve as lead agency so that clock starts to run.
Would we do that this evening, or would we do that once we've advanced this a little?
It's up to you.
Okay. I'd like to hold off a little, just so we get, because I don't know if we're doing the cluster or the conventional, and we may want to either submit both plans or one plan to those agencies, because we would include the plan itself when it goes out to the agencies that would be involved in the review. So I don't necessarily want to quite get the SEAC yet, but again, I think reaching out to DEC, that's just one agency that's going to be involved anyway. So I'd like to get input from them just earlier so that we have that information. We're going to ask the EMC to go out. We may go out. So we have that in the back of our minds as we're looking at the site.
Sure. And what's the EMC, environment?
It's our council, our environmental council. And they'll also be looking at the tree.
New acronym.
Surveys.
Okay.
I have another question on this, the short environmental assessment form.
Mm-hmm.
It's, question number two asks, "Does the proposed action require a permit, approval or funding from any other government agency?" And it says yes. And list the Town of Monroe ZBA, the zoning board of appeals. And I was just wondering, you know...
Which question?
It's the short environmental assessment form.
I have a question too. It says Town of Monroe Planning Board, Highway Department for the, for the road.
What would the ZBA, is there any variances, or why would you need to?
I don't have, I don't have ZBA online.
Really?
We have it on ours.
We do have it on ours.
Yeah, so it's, it is listed.
It, this is 262 Scunnamunk?
We don't need a ZBA.
So I don't know why it's on our form, but... So, I don't know why it's on our form, but...
No, the ZBA is not required. All the lots will currently...
Well...
I gave you their packet, it's that they gave me.
Yeah, they currently meet the code.
And my one does not have it.
Well, the ZBA shows up on the short form from '15, but it's, there's two. There's one from '15 and one from '18.
Yeah, this was an original, yeah.
I guess, the plan change when the...
Correct.
...as a plan, if I follow that correctly?
You're 100%.
So, yeah, it came off there. But yeah, I noticed that too.
Yeah, back in, back in 2015, there was an original application before the moratorium for this.
But that's kind of odd, because was the EAF mapper already in place in 2015?
No, we did a new one. You should have a new one for this application.
Right. This 2015, that's signed 2015?
No, we did a new one.
Right, no, no, I'm just saying, this one that said ZBA on it? It looks like it was run through the EAF mapper.
Correct.
I just didn't know that it was actually, maybe it has been in place that long.
Yeah.
Put the old one in the back of your folders.
Yeah.
That, that application did require ZBA, but this one does not.
Okay. So, that's just for history.
Yes.
As long as we're talking about the short environment, I have a question about, question number 12, 12B. "Is the proposed action located in an archaeologically sensitive area?" And that's yes. What about this property is archaeologically sensitive?
It's, it could be nothing. It could, it could simply be when you do the EAF mapper, it generates answers. So, when you punch in, you pick the address, you pick the property.
Okay.
The DEC has a database, and if it's in an area that, you know, maybe half a mile away, there was a site that had archaeological sensitivity, it defines a zone, and then it automatically will select yes. And then, it's up, it's up to us to basically prove otherwise, or find out if there is something on the property.
So, again, policy question. When it falls within an archaeologically sensitive area, is there just a presumption that a cultural resource survey is necessary, or would the planning board contact SHPO and get their input?
Normally, it's referred up to SHPO for a response. They may, in fact, give a clarification on what might have triggered the yes.
Correct.
And indicate that this particular site may not be involved.
Okay. Now, I know with the...
I believe, I think it's the firehouse on the corner, I believe, triggers it.
The firehouse?
I think so.
As opposed to the chicken coops?
Yeah. You never know. Could be, could be an ancient chicken coop.
Yeah, no, I mean, there was, the reason that archaeologically sensitive area is there is they found something.
Correct.
And so, it's a, it was drawn around an actual, you know, archaeological site, so...
Or it could be a building, or something that's, you know, listed on their register.
John, maybe that chicken coop will remain.
Yeah, maybe it's historic.
Yeah, no, it's right in the middle of the site.
Would that also include, there's a lot of stone walls that run through this area, including, right, this boundary is the cable cut?
Correct.
Right? So, I know there's a lot of stone walling that runs through here. Would that simply be something possibly, if they're old enough, I guess? Would that trigger that kind of thing, or not really?
I...
Depending on where you are, yes. I don't know that it would be here. Up in Marble Town, we've just gone through a whole process where it's been argued that the walls were actually put up by Native Americans. So, you know, I think in this area, a lot of it's farm-related. Although, having said that, I think in future iterations, if there are stone walls, if you could just put them on the plan, general locations, if there are.
Yeah, no, usually, we did not do the survey, so I'll have the surveyor locate those.
Okay. And then, again, process-wise, should we enter this into the CRIS system, or have them...
We're going to ask, we're going to ask the applicant to make the submittal through the CRIS system.
Okay.
And then provide a copy of that to the planning board secretary, so it's on record.
Okay.
And then we'll wait for the response.
So, I think in the, so the CRIS system is the cultural resource information system, I believe. It's a database that is kept up by the state historic preservation office, and it can be entered by the town, or it could be entered by the applicant. If it's entered by the applicant, I believe you can include other people who should receive whatever responses are provided by SHPO. So, if you would include us on the CRIS system as a contact, include Noreen.
Sure.
Just so she gets the response at the same time you do.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay. Great.
Great.
So, again, just one of those early, you know, they may ask for the site plan, so you could send this one to them. I know, again, we talked about trying to get the cultural when we actually do the notice of intent, but just to get an early indication of cultural resource need for investigation, you know...
You can be ahead of the game.
You can send that one up.
Yeah, the folks at Park Recreation Historic Preservation no longer will take as part of a secret lead agency circulation, they won't accept the letter and the plan.
Okay. They want it all CRIS?
They rather emphatically have told me no several times.
All right.
So, you have to actually go through the CRIS system to make any submittals.
Right.
So, that's why we asked the applicant to do that and copy the town.
Okay, very good. Board members, other questions on the submission at this point? It's a preliminary submission, a sketch, give you a sense of the application, you're good. Mark might?
What's that?
All right.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, with that, the next item on the agenda is Bald Hill Estate subdivision number 0002-2000. While the applicant comes up, do we have any minutes that are outstanding that we need to take care of?
No, I didn't do the one because four docs isn't working right.
Okay.
Get them done so hopefully.
Next time. Okay. Thank you. Let me try and find the parcel here. And... Do you want to go through the PowerPoint presentation first? What's your preferences? Actually, and just state your name for the record, everybody who's here.
Sure. George Lithgow from Chakowitz and Gubitz. I am the project attorney.
I'm Narali Tharani from Leonard Jackson Associates.
I'm Leonard Jackson of Leonard Jackson Associates.
John Till, architect.
Thank you.
Leonard and I are here because we're the only people who actually have been involved with this project since it began. And I just want to point out two things. One is, if this project was a person, it would be eligible to vote this year. And the second is, you guys are jumping in to projects at different points in their lifecycle. The one you just had is sort of entering kindergarten. This project is eligible for retirement. You know, we've been, we've been here for a long time. So, has anybody watched the minutes, or the video from the December meeting? Because I did, again, just to relive the experience. The last board really did try to take this off your plate. They recognized you guys have a lot of learning to do, a lot of experience to gather, and, you know, you're coming in, I was going to say you're coming in at the 11th hour, but you're actually coming in at the 18th year. We've been through this a long time. One of the, the previous chair had asked that I come to the December meeting and give some historical perspective, give an overview of the project, and sort of try to frame where it's been, how it came to be what it is. I think what probably would be more useful to do first is perhaps describe the project as it exists now, and then, to the extent it will be helpful to the board, I can give you some historical perspective on how it came to be, that project. But I think to get an understanding of what you're dealing with at this point in time, it might be helpful if Narali can take you through the details of the project and describe it.
Just a quick question. We received a Bald Hill timeline this evening. Was that prepared by you, Mike, or by the applicant?
It was prepared by me. It was distributed at the December meeting, and since, I'm not sure if Ms. McQuade was there, I figured no one else had it, so...
Okay. I think at some point, you know, after the presentation, I don't know if it'll be during the presentation, just so the board understands that this particular project is subject to the stipulation of agreement. So, you know, to some extent, there are things we can do and we can't do. So, and you are at the very end of the process here. So, with that, take it away, and let me know when you need me to change the slide.
Sure. I have, I mean, one, two. Yeah, just go over the description of the site and the location, and maybe you can keep clicking when I ask, and we can keep going. So, that's the vicinity of the project, and it's located just south of Route 17, as you can see. If you can click again, you'll see this is from County Route 105. There's an access to the site. There's, one more click, there's Larkin Drive on the east, and right across from the site entrance is Duran Drive, just to give you a little location perspective of the site. And, all right, so, this is a 70-acre parcel, and the entrance to the site, if you click on the mouse, it'll show you a 30-foot wide road. That's the entrance to the site, and there's another, there's an emergency access road to the site located on the south. And the road is a, the road where it's highlighted right now is a public road up to that portion, up to the cul-de-sac, and the remaining portion of the road is private road. The entire loop you see that runs along the site is private road. The source of water for this site is two wells, and we have a treatment building located just next to the cul-de-sac, where the water will be pumped all the way up to the tank. That's, that's all the way on the west. Click one more time, you'll see the location of the tank.
Actually, I think it's just off, because I can see water tank on this. Oh, okay.
Oh, my God. Yep. It's a 311,000 gallon water tank that's going to serve water to the community. If you go to the next. All right, so this project is a 70-acre lot, and it's going to be divided in three construction phases. There are five different lots on the site, lot 1 through 5, and the entire development is proposed on Lot 4. That's the first phase of construction, which will have 58, that's right, which will have 58 units in it.
So, that, that is 58 units?
That's correct.
Okay.
And that represents the second phase of construction with 38 units. And the last phase will have 42 units in it. So, that, that represents the three phases of the site. Now, the remaining phase, the remaining lots, Lot 1, 2, 3, and 5 are LI zones, and no construction is currently proposed in that. The LI zone, the Lot 1 and 2 in the LI zones are reserved for future development as commercial lots. There's no proposal yet.
How do you get access to those lots?
It's through the main road. You see the Lot 2? Lot 1 and Lot 2 are located right here, so they have access to the main road.
Okay, so those are the two LI. It's not beyond?
There is a lot round back of the property, but it's under conservation easement. No development is proposed in that location.
Okay, so there's another lot?
Yes.
And is that being dedicated, or is that who?
It'll be retained by the owner, but it will be subject to a restrictive covenant. It was originally thought we may be able to get a conservation easement that someone would accept, but the Orange County Land Trust declined. My expectation is the county is, the town is not interested in doing it, so we would do a restrictive covenant that would contain the same provisions, basically.
My reaction is I think that probably should be run by the 2018 town board, as far as a conservation easement, if that's possible.
We have a list of things that we'll be doing with the town board.
Okay.
To effectuate some of the conditions.
Okay. How big is the conservation parcel?
It's 20 acres, I think. 15, 20 acres.
Yeah, it should be around 20 acres.
So, that's in addition to the 70, or that's from the...
From the 70.
From the 70, okay.
All right, we have two locations of the groundwater management basins, basin A and B. They'll be constructed during the Phase 1 of the project. And, next slide, the next. Okay, the sanitary sewer will be served, will be connected to an existing sanitary sewer trunk, which is owned and operated by Orange County Sewer District, and the central sewer system from the project will connect to that trunk.
That's an existing trunk, or proposed trunk?
That is an existing trunk.
And it goes through wetlands? Or there was wetlands?
Uh...
The good old days.
[laughing] Okay. So, but it exists, so.
It exists.
All right.
All right. So, the complete project will consist of 138 residential units.
Mm-hmm.
And, and these groundwater manag, these are just the details of plans.
The phases.
If you want to go into detail, but that's the end of the slide.
Phase 1, phase 2.
Yeah. And a couple of things I wanted to mention was, there's going to be a traffic signal that's proposed at the entrance of the site. And you can go back to the first slide.
First one?
Yeah, these are just the additional slides in case you want to see them. All right, so the entrance of the site, a traffic signal is proposed, and it's already approved. The applicant also proposes to, also proposes improvements on the County Route 105 by adding additional travel lanes on both sides of the road.
Yep, so it was this side, okay.
Yep. So, basically, that's the overall review of the project site, and maybe George can go over the historical aspects.
So, in the beginning, there was a proposal to do a single-family development on this property. We spent probably a year and a half with the board, looking at different options, different designs. We looked at the possibility of some multifamily because of the grades. After a lot of review and discussion, and occasional meetings with representatives from the town, the best option seemed to be to create a URM zone, allow development of the hilly area with townhouse kind of development, because the grades can be, it's a lot easier than trying to fit single-family homes up there. So, in 2003, the town did rezone the property to allow that as part of a general rezoning that was going on. One of the town's concerns was, LI did allow single-family residences in 2003 and before. The town was concerned that the, and I think it's the issue you've also heard with the current zoning, that the LI zone was being used up for residential purposes, there was a need for developable sites, commercial development being tax ratables and other things that would, and job generators. So, the town had proposed to take the LI zone, the residential out of the LI zone. We had a series of discussions with the town board. The town ultimately determined it would rezone a portion of the property for URM, and the LI zoning would remain available for the lots that really seemed to suit, well, had grades which could suit development and ready access. And we proceeded to prepare an EIS. There was a scoping outline draft EIS. There was discussion about water in the course of that, and other issues. We wound up doing a supplemental EIS, and eventually, a finding statement was done in 2008, I believe. Finding statement proposed that, and the development proposed that we would be making a connection to a future extension of Larkin Drive West, that we would construct a portion of that road between Larkin Drive, the intersection where Larkin Drive comes in from the east. We would construct an extension further west over what was called the Oliveri property. Mr. Oliveri proved very difficult to negotiate with. He eventually declined to give us permission to do that. Basically, at that point, we said to the town, what we would like to do is pay you whatever it would have cost us to build that road, and we'll use this access point unless you get permission, and Larkin Drive West is... unless you get permission and Larkin Drive West is constructed, if you wanna construct that portion of Larkin Drive, if you, if it goes further, we, you know, whatever the town can accomplish, we're more than happy to help facilitate. So there was a discussion about that. There was a disagreement as to whether or not that was practical for the town or us to do and litigation ensued. At that point, we were seeking approval for 112 units in a conventional, um, townhouse development. There was an option for us to do more units. What, what came out of that was this project, which allows us to do more units, 138, in exchange for a payment to the town of the amount of money that project would have cost, what would have cost us to build the extension of Larkin Drive West to provide access to our property. So after, uh-
Okay, so, so right now, this is alternative three with 138 units?
Yes. It's actually four, but it's 138 units.
Okay, and so you're to make some kind of road contribution still?
Uh, yes, $1,010,000.
And that's based on $2,010?
It's based on our stipulation of settlement.
Okay. Thank you.
So, yes. So, uh, we went through a period of litigation. That awkwardness was resolved in what I think was a constructive manner and then we ran into our next challenge, which was finding a water supply. We approached the town of Harriman, uh, sorry, the village of Harriman, the village of Monroe, the village of Curious Joel, and explored options with them. Uh, Harriman refused, KJ did not have water, and the village of Monroe wanted a million dollars. Um, since we're already giving a million dollars to the town, we really didn't feel we had the ability to do that. Uh, so we wound up constructing, or proceeding to explore the site for water. We found water, we went back to the planning board, which had said, uh, in its findings that there would be no, that we were gonna use one of those four municipal sources. So we went back and said, we need, we can't get one of the municipal sources to commit to us. We have found water, we'd like to do an onsite supply. We went through a seeker process in 2013 and he-
Wait, I'm sorry, hold on. So, so you received a preliminary approval resolution, but you didn't have water at that point and it was subsequent to preliminary approval?
It was a condition of the approval that we-
That you find it?
It was based upon a municipal connection.
Okay.
But there was provision that in the event that a municipal connection was not possible-
Okay.
-they'd have to come back and demonstrate that they did have an adequate water supply and they have done that as well.
Okay, and so then, 2013, it says the PB consistency determination, that's the seeker you're referring to?
Correct. It did seeker on it. He had Tom Cuzak come and evaluate our water test results and, uh, it was approved or accepted as a... So with that in hand, we then went to DC and in 2014, DC adopted new regu, or the state adopted new regulatory, uh, new regulatory framework for water supply. Uh, they require a water takings permit now and they require it for us when you have sources that are capable of extracting more than 100,000 gallons a day of water. As Leonard can testify, we discovered that DC interprets that provision very conservatively. Our water supply is, uh, 33,000 gallons per day, I believe. And the way DC looks at that is, you need wells that produce 33,000, you need twice that to satisfy your average daily demand and you need to have one, the ability to do that with one well out of service.
Right.
Which means one well, one of our wells has to generate 66.
Hmm.
The other well has to generate 66, therefore it's 136 and therefore we required water takings permit.
Hmm.
We explored various ways to work that out with DC to no avail. That took us approximately 18 months to get to a conclusion. We applied for the permit in, I believe, 2015. We eventually did receive it last year and, um, we now have a water supply.
That was in 2017, water supply permit?
Yes.
Okay.
So we now have an approved water supply. Uh, we've gone through the sewer process, I mean, until we had water, it wasn't, we decided to use the usual process of first find water, then deal with the sewer. Um, we are, we have approval from Orange County, not approval. We have gone through the technical review process with Orange County Sewer District. Basically, we just have to make some minor tweaks and go back there. So the water and sewer stuff took us some time to get, um, taken care of and in the interim, DC changed the stormwater regulations and they changed their transition policy in a way that ultimately required us to go and fiddle around with the SWIP so that it conformed to the 2015 standards, notwithstanding that we had filed our SWIP, or we had prepared our SWIP in, uh, I'm assuming 2005, '06?
2005, 2005, we submitted the SWIP.
So we, we have a, we had a SWIP which by the DC rules would be eligible to transition from the 2005 to 2010. Uh, DC, when we discussed it with them, wanted us to modify and upgrade it to meet the 2015 standards. So we did that.
When, when was this done? Is it complete?
It is complete, well-
There's more to it.
It is complete. We, we did go through the process with Mark's office-
Okay.
-the issue of the MS4 certification. We submitted the NOI, we went and DC said, oop, we have a couple of issues. Uh, and basically what they want us to do is go, we, we had to propose infiltration practices because that's what 2015 requires. And they said, well, since you're now using or proposing to use infiltration, you have to go and see whether or not those sites are capable of infiltration, which means we would have to go develop some method of getting to all of the sites throughout the 70-acre parcel and evaluate the capability at that point. That's what DC's view of it was. So we came, we have proposed a different process instead of infiltration. Leonard's office has proposed and DC accepted a sister-in-system and if we do have acceptable infiltration at the site, once, once we're in the process of development, uh, we may request DC approve the infiltration practices for those sites. But one of those two ways, we can do it. It doesn't change other aspects of the site plan as far as I know, so what you see is still what you'll get. I think if you had watched the meeting last month, well, at the meeting last month-
The December meeting?
Yes, the December meeting. Uh, as I mentioned, the chairperson was making a valiant effort to see if we, they could get through the process. Uh, there were two issues that the members had concerns about and they wanted us to address. One was the architectural guidelines that were required by the preliminary approval. And basically, those guidelines are required in the words of the, I think it's in the words of the preliminary approval resolution, well, I'll paraphrase, to prevent an ungodly mess. When, you know, this is gonna be developed over time, there, there is potential for different contractors to be working, working on different sections. Uh, the board wanted, granted preliminary approval, wanted assurance that there was a general set of guidelines, so there's a coherent and visually appealing, uh, manner of construction taking place. And it took us some time to get to something that we think, uh, is what we proposed to do. We had originally, in the FEIS, considered, uh, what you might call a 2007 plan. Uh, if you've looked at buildings from that period, they tend to be a little larger, more ornate, they're not really what is, you know, the, the current market. The client looked at that, yeah, for some time and decided, you really need to do something that's more feasible in the current market. John can tell you more about the design that's been developed. You have some renderings, uh, you have a 3D version tonight-
Yes.
...which will give you, I think, a good sense of what these things will actually look like, so I wanna leave time for him to talk to you about that. But, uh, the other important issue, well, two, the two other important issues for the board, last year's board. One was to make sure DPW got its traffic comments back to you, which they have done. Uh, I believe Mark has a copy, I'm not sure if it was distributed to the board yet because it was addressed to, uh, the former chairperson, but, uh, basically, we have, I think, six comments from County DPW and, uh, they've been reviewed by the traffic consultant, Mazer, and Mazer is agreeable with all of them. The only one that might, involves a slight site plan change is DPW suggested we look at the possibility of having two exit lanes, you know, a left turn, right turn configuration. And Raleigh's indicated that, that is feasible, so we would, that would become our proposal to DPW for our permitting. Uh, and just to explain a little bit more about how these other agencies, agency approvals work. For example, when you go to DPW, you have the plans we submitted, in this case to you, which it took us a little, it's, this, this has been quite the adventure. Took us a couple of months to get confirmation, confirmation from the town to DPW that those were actually the plans that had been submitted. But you take those plans, which are site plans, and DPW looks at them and, uh, basically will tell you, what you're proposing to do is acceptable and ultimately what you have to do is submit a plan, construction plans to DPW for the work in the county right away and they will approve the construction plans, which are much more detailed versions of what you see on your site plan. So we are at that point, they've told us it's, it's, it's acceptable. Uh, they've indicated, uh, to Mazer that the traffic study that we provided in December of 2016, which was reviewed by the board's consultant in the spring of 2017 and was sent to DPW in August of 2017, uh, is acceptable. Basically, what that looked at, the traffic levels that exist now, the improvements that are proposed, and it found that those improvements are still, um, adequate to provide the necessary mitigation for our traffic, which is not to say that the other projects that are in, coming down the pike like Larkin LLC, if those go forward, those will have to do additional mitigation. But for our impacts, we're providing adequate mitigation with the travel lanes, the traffic, the traffic single and proposed improvements to the Larkin Drive intersection. And in addition, we're going to be providing some, a single coordination, which is one of the DPW requests.
Just as a matter, I'd start to interrupt to George. When it comes to the DOT, the Highway Superintendent or the County DPW in terms of roadways, uh, what you usually do or what your practice has been in the past, when it comes to the final resolution condition, we require that conceptual approval has been obtained. We are at that stage here. We then say that the approval is conditioned upon that agency issuing the highway work permit, which is based upon the construction drawings that George has mentioned. And we have a third piece of that condition that says, in the event that, that agency, the DOT, County DPW or the Highway Superintendent, at the time of work permit review, makes further changes that affect a site plan layout, like the driveway gets moved, then the applicant has to come back to us for amended site plan or subdivision approval to approve that relocation. It's kind of, who's gonna go first here and typically, county agencies and state agencies get to go last, but we keep a little yo-yo string that in the event they make further changes, we can pull it back here.
So, uh, the third thing that was asked of us at the summer meeting was that we recent, we had, we had gone to the Town Board after discussion with the, with Mark about the potential for a town water district to be utilized to provide the water supply here. We went to the Town Board in February of 2016 with a proposal that, uh, the town, we would construct the system, the town would take it over and operate it as a town district. Um, if you looked at the video, I was, I amused myself because I said the Town Board was polite and we never heard anything further. So the planning board in December did ask that we renew that request. We sent the letter, which I think you received, which basically, um, not to say history is repeating itself, but we haven't heard anything yet. So, uh, what we're willing to do is keep that offer on the table. Uh, if at some point in the future the town believes that would be in the town's interest, we're more than happy to, um, make that happen. So, the fourth thing was the, we had an approval resolution, um, I think it was in October, the resolution was modified to put in the conditions from the preliminary approval. Some of those conditions have actually been met and, uh, some of them were already in the draft resolution, so we need to just work with your consultants and take care of the stuff that's taken care of. It doesn't need to be in a condition of approval if we've done it already. And to the extent there's redundant or repetitive language, eliminate that.
What we'll do, just again to interrupt, we're gonna meet tomorrow and that will part of what we will discuss then, but we will take that draft resolution that had forty-some-odd conditions, whatever it was, put strike through for those that are no longer needed, put margin comments as to why, put margin comments as to the status of other agency approvals and delete the repetitive conditions so that hopefully in the near future, you will have a red line, which will look messy, and a clean copy of the resolution that should be ready for action by you. And that needs to be cleaned up and this has been a moving target, as George is explaining, these things are happening, but we're getting to the point where we're nearing the finish line.
So, Mike, um, in our package, we had a resolution of preliminary approval, Schedule A, technical plan requirements for Dubger Real Thief Bald Hill.
And that's all?
That's the list that you're referring to?
That was the preliminary resolution and then there was the technical comment memo. That's now been put into the draft final resolution, so it's all in one place, but there's an awful lot of stuff that's no longer needed. That, the way the preliminary resolution read is it dictated all the things that needed to be done before the applicant could get final approval.
Final, right.
Many of those things have been done. What we do then is we, we throw all those conditions back into the draft final and as they're satisfied, we, we knock them out until the thing shrinks up and it's ready for action and that's the process we're gonna go through now.
So at this-
Not tonight, but now.
At this point, the application is at preliminary plan approval. It's not final, subject to conditions, it's still preliminary. Okay.
Relative, George, to water, just in support of the cooperative effort that has been occurring, notwithstanding the fact that we're not quite sure if the Town Board's gonna wanna pursue the district, we've worked with the applicant to add some provisions into the design that we thought would be helpful, that if the town cared to take the district, the improvements, rather, and create a district in the future, some improvements that would enhance the ability for the town to use the system. The location of the water storage tank on this project is very beneficial if a district along Larkin is established, just the elevation advantage. So they've provided for the ability to provide a, an additional storage tank on that plateau. Minor improvements like that, but we've worked with Lenny's office so that if and when the town wants to pursue the option, if they do, we've planned ahead. So they've been very helpful in that regard.
At this point in time, all of the infrastructure, whether it's stormwater or water supply, so those are on their property and not, I mean, they're not shown as like individual municipal lots because the-
The only-
-the Town Board hasn't signed or indicated that they're interested.
The only proposed Town of Monroe improvement would be the road section.
The road section, okay. That, that limited road section. Why is that, that that piece is public and the rest is private?
The Town, Highway Superintendent and the Town Board would not accept, they announced ahead of time they would not accept the rest of the road.
Well, yeah, the rest of the road is basically serving the condominium, the townhouse development, it's residential. Uh, it really wasn't something that the town, at the time, felt would be appropriate as a public road, whereas this would be providing access to at least two commercial lots.
Okay, so it's for the commercial lots that it's-
Yeah, it's more for the mixed-use version.
Okay. Gotcha.
Right.
Okay.
So, and if the town doesn't take the water, the water facilities, it would not be the first time the town has not fully implemented a water project. There are, little known fact, there are water mains in Larkin Drive and extend to, I think extend to the town boundary. Uh, they were installed when then Industrial Road was constructed in 1989, I think. Uh, with- With the idea that because it was zoned for development, it would become an area which would need and use town water. The water mains are still there, but they've never been used.
So, George, you had said there were three kind of outstanding items, architectural guidelines, DPW, that seems to have been progressed, and then the town water district.
Yes.
Were there any others?
The fourth is just the need to consolidate the resolution, so it's ready for final action.
Tonight, did you want to go through the architectural?
I think the, well, I certainly think the last board would have been delighted to go through architectural.
We would love to.
We brought Mr. Hill, just so, till, just so he can go through it with you, explain what he's done, where we've come from in terms of the EIS, and show you what we think this project will look like when it's actually constructed.
Do you have a, do I have here, on the thumb drive, anything, or?
I don't think we have PDFs, but we have-
You have handouts. I know we received one here. And as you're handing those out, one of my questions was, does this building reflect the one we have, I mean, maybe there'll be more, all the permutations, the variations in building design, whether there are walkouts, whether there's uphill versus downhill lots, et cetera? Are they all exactly the same, or are some of the buildings different in terms of heights, the stories that you see, and again, because of the fact that they're working with slope?
Right. The answer is, well, the answer is yes. They are different to some respects, and that was the purpose of Condition 34, is to, it's, we're trying to hit the Goldilocks zone, where we're not wildly dissimilar to the point things look chaotic or unrelated, but at the same time, we don't want to be entirely uniform. So in the world, in the words of the former chairman, Charlie Finerdy, "doesn't look like a barracks," which is what he once described Meadow Glen as.
Maybe I could read Condition 34 so you can see what the objective was of the architectural submittal. Architectural finish appearance, call it. There will need to be some acceptable guidelines specified for the exterior finish and design of the units throughout the project, so that there is a unified theme and appearance for the project. It is recognized that if the different buildings are constructed by different builders, the entire project could look like a disaster, and it will harm the desirability of the project. The applicant will propose some guidelines before final approval. Some of the elements that are noted as being important relate to exterior trim finishes and consistency of finish on all sides of the building, color and materials consistency. So that was the idea of what the applicant was to submit.
I just need a little more, I think we need a little more background as to the units themselves. Are these stacked multifamily units, are these townhouses? Sort of what's the design? What are we looking at? Because, you know, I see stairs going up, stairs at ground level, or sorry, entries going upstairs, entries at ground level. So sort of what's the makeup of these buildings? And in the secret process, or somewhere along the line, what are floor plans for these units?
I, yeah, there were four. First off, they're townhouses.
They're townhouses?
Right. So, one unit is basically from the floor up.
Okay.
There was in the original FEIS, a building rendering which was done, and a conceptual floor plan for that unit. Basically, this is going to be two floors, basement, garage.
Yeah, so the, again, John Till, architect, the way these are constructed is they are semi-attached, single-family homes. They will have multiple levels, as you can see, but each individual, each individual building lot is a single-family home. And they're attached in either six units together, or four units together, or two units together, based on the site plan.
So each individual dwelling unit, even though they're attached, is located on an individual lot?
Building footprint.
No, they're not on individual.
No, so they're going to be in condominium ownership? From the perspective of they're not individual lots? Okay.
So from the moment you walk into that particular dwelling, from the ground, from the ground floor to the roof, is owned by one person?
So if I look at this unit here, there's a door here, and there's a door here.
Correct. So what you're looking at on that particular rendering is the end unit, which the end unit, the entry to the end unit will be on the side, because that's more preferable. And then the center units, the entrance is in the front of the building.
So this being-
So as you go across-
Separate unit?
Yeah, so as you go across the rendering, each gable in that rendering is a separate unit.
Each gable, so this is one, two, three, four.
Uh. Yeah, and the, the gable actually splits between, it's, it's one unit plus some additional space on the side inside that particular unit. So, for instance, the rendering that you're looking at here is a six-unit building. So the first entrance is on, on the right. Then you have a second entrance after the first garage.
Yeah.
Then you have two entrances in the center, which flank right and one flanks left. And then again, another entrance towards the left side of the building, and then a, another entrance all the way around on the full left-hand side.
So, so if we go by garages, the two end units have two-car garages? And then in between, you have single-car garages for the units in between?
Correct.
And so, the two end units are all, the unit itself is below that gable? But you're saying that the four units in between are a combination of half of what's under a big gable, and then half of what's underneath the dormer?
Correct.
Okay.
So you have a single, on the center units, you'll have a single garage, and an entrance way to the unit would be considered one unit.
Okay, so if-
So for instance, so for instance, if you look at the two-dimensional printout here that was submitted-
Yeah, yeah.
You'll see there's some dimensions that show you the separations. There's a dashed line that shows you the actual separation between the units.
Okay.
So that you can see the delineation. And it can vary depending upon, the architectural vernacular can vary depending upon the type of building that we're building, whether it's a four-unit or a six-unit building.
Is it four, five, or six? There's no more than six per building? Or there are more than six?
Six is the maximum.
Six max, okay.
And in the interest of developing the architectural guidelines, we've developed a system that can vary depending upon the building makeup, but still be consistent throughout the project. We'll, we'll have certain features, for instance, roof dormers and gables and front porches that cover the entrances. And that would vary throughout the project, but be consistent throughout the project as well. So it might vary in shape and size and color, but it'll be consistent from building to building.
Was there any requirement that these be earth tone?
Yes.
Earth tone?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I believe one of the, in the statements, I believe there was, have earth tone in nature, the colors be earth tone in nature. We've also submitted tonight the color selection guidelines, which would be on this sheet here. And where we've grouped together the siding colors, the trim colors, the roof colors, and the stone facing colors into groups of six different options. And those six different options, we have those samples here tonight-
Okay.
-to review, and-
The siding colors?
Siding colors.
Okay.
Trim colors, roofing colors, and, and trim colors.
Okay.
And we've selected these in a way so that they'll blend together, they'll work together in terms of the color palette, but they vary to some extent so that doesn't, it has some harmony throughout the entire project, and some connection from one building to the next, so that it makes some sense.
In terms of, so in terms of the style, right now, we have kind of one set of plans that show these dormers. Now, the dormers are just, are they decorative? They're not, there's not habitable space up there, or is there?
Just decorative.
Okay. So you have the dormers, and then you have what looks like, almost like a board and batten type look.
Correct.
And then you have the horizontal, vertical siding.
Correct.
Are there variations on that, or they're all going to have that vertical and the batten board? Will some have shutters, no shutters?
Yes, so in the gables of the buildings, we show a board and batten type of finish. It could also potentially be a shake kind of finish, a shake or a clatboard type of finish. So these can vary throughout the project, as well as, as well as the color vary throughout the project, based on, based on the approved list. We wouldn't be able to deviate from this approved list once it's approved.
Unless we get your permission.
So, I guess then the quest, so-
So we, obviously, we have many buildings to work with here.
Right.
So we're trying to develop a, an architectural language throughout the project-
Right.
-that we can apply from building to building. And what, what gets applied will be done at the time of building permit application, where we select the final composite of units, the final selection of gables and dormers, and the final selection of the exterior view of the building for that particular building block.
So the, the building blocks are going to remain the same as per the site plan?
The building blocks will be as per the site plan.
Right, so two, four, six, whatever they are. So what's going to vary are the architectural-
The architectural-
Elements.
Elements.
How many buildings total?
One hundred and thirty-eight units. The total is?
Probably five.
No, they are, yeah, I don't know how many verdicts. But they're a combination, they have two units, four, five, and six.
Let me see if I can bring it up. I'm just, I'm curious how many there are, as far as then compared to the options.
Since I'm not talking, if you put it up, I'll count them.
Yeah. I couldn't do that, George. Good idea.
It's like, you know, it's actually forty or fifty, but-
Uh, here's the PowerPoint.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Jim.
Is there, there might be a better slide.
Yeah, they might. What is that?
I'm up to seventeen.
I was trying to get myself here to bring it to good. Is that, can you read that, George?
Again.
So, so I'm curious how many buildings versus how many styles and differentiations?
So, again, the, the variation will be in, in terms of the unit selected based on market conditions.
Approximately forty.
Forty, thank you.
And that will, as, as those particular buildings come up for a building department review, at that point, we'll have an elevation of the front of the particular building in question, that's going under permit. And we've also, at that point, would have selected a color option from A, B, C, D, or E, or F. And that would also be tied to that particular building. And the idea is that we wouldn't necessarily have the same building next to it with the same architectural look and the same colors. We'd want to vary it throughout the project. But, but the third one next to it may have that same color. So there is some continuity throughout the project, they're just not all right next to each other with the same color, and creating a monotonous look to the, to the neighborhood, trying to vary it a little bit within, within, within the guidelines.
How visible, what I don't have a sense of, and I'd have to look at a grading plan, but how much existing vegetation is retained, or is this basically a clear cut to accommodate all the buildings? So in other words, which relates to then, how visible will the buildings themselves be long-term? Will they be screened over time by landscaping, or?
The answer, well, the answer to that last question is yes. The EIS did consider that issue, there was, there was an extensive visual impact analysis that was performed as part of that, because it is higher up. And one of the things that's being done, there is a buffer area along the southern border to screen it from, I forget the name of the, the name of the road, but it's before, so-
Joining the single-family development there? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
Okay.
And there was a landscaping plan that was developed, which my recollection was, it was acknowledged to be a robust plan.
Okay, it's part of the plan set?
Yes.
I think I saw landscaping plans.
So there will be a substantial amount of disturbance to get the buildings in and the roads in. There will be mitigation in the form of the landscaping plan to address that. The earth tone is one other consideration for that, because of the visibility. And the sense of this Condition 34 is to make sure that it doesn't look unappealing, even if it's from a distance.
And, and the reason I ask is that's, when I hear earth tone, and so this is part of the question and discussion, earth tone to me, it sounds like they wanted it to be muted so it would kind of blend in to the environment, that's often why they call it earth tone. And so when I see white, to me, that's going to stand out, but whether that matters or not depends on how visible the project is. So, that's, I'm curious about all the colors that you're contemplating utilizing, because if you're trying to have this kind of blend more into the background, I would envision slightly darker colors, rather than lighter colors.
So absolutely, so to respond to that, the items that we have that are white are typically either a window trim or a siding trim, which is a very, it's a, it's a minor amount of coverage. When you step back from the building and back even further from the site, what's going to be prominent are the, going to be the roof colors and the siding colors. Those are the, those are the items that are going to cover over ninety-five percent of the building, whereas the trim colors tend to disappear as the further you go away from the building. So where we may be using trim colors to highlight gables and wrap windows and doorways, the, the siding color, or the clatboard color, or the, will be most prominent as you, as you move away. And those colors, we do have, and they are, they are the gray tones and the sage, seagrass green, and also, so we have those to, for you to review as well.
Okay.
So we'd be happy to-
That'd be great.
-show them to you.
Sure.
So what I've done here is you've just tagged the colors that are included in the chart here.
Okay.
And maybe it'll illustrate John's point a little bit, if you look at the rendering from this distance, you don't really see the white.
So these are one, two, three. And, and these are both, these are the vinyl siding colors? Not just the trim, right?
Yes, vinyl siding colors. And in some cases, the trim colors as well.
Okay.
Additional colors here as well, which match up to a series of our selections.
Do you have examples of- Do you have examples of projects where they're large scale like this, multifamily or townhouse developments, and they've used different roofing colors per building? Because things, something that would unite them all is the same roofing color. And so I, I'm sure if they're close enough, it won't look that bad. It'll look fine, but I'd be concerned if you have sort of something that's in the blackish colors, maybe something in the greenish color, you know, there may be some disparity with roofing, where those tend to be kind of the same, but then varying the, the actual siding colors.
Correct, correct. So the, certainly, in, in keeping with the architectural guidelines, we'd want colors that, that blend together, that go together, but we don't want it to be candy striped.
Right.
So to speak.
Right, right.
So we do, and, and one possible option would be to develop the roofing color per neighborhood.
Yeah.
So you have one whole block that's all the same roofing color, but the siding colors can vary, so it, so it isn't monotonous. We'd be happy to address that.
Okay. Just my kind of reaction as to some of the colors. I think they're light. Just my preference, again, if you're trying to get things that are more muted and closer to being, and blending into vegetation or background, foliage, you know, sometimes darker blues, darker greens, I've seen used. So that's just my reaction. And I, and frankly, I think we all have to review this, just so, you know, we have a sense as a workshop. So I don't know. Thoughts, you know, from the board members in general?
I don't have much of an issue with the dark, with the darker color. I think, was it the roofing one here? I'm just thinking when I come back from, oh, roof ones. That's the one. I'm just thinking, because I come down the hill from Route Six a lot, like a lot, a lot, more often than I like to admit. One of the things that really bothers me is when I look out and I can see the bright lights of Target, and I think the, what is this, natural timber one, just that would be something monotone, monotone, monotonous, I think would be better from a visual perspective from Route Six. Up close, I don't know how much attention people pay up close to the roofs. That's, I know I don't. I have solar panels on my roof, and that's all I can tell you about my roof.
While we're on the roof, if they're, are they the same patterns? Because they're two different ones. And I noticed the one was the architectural style of shingles, and I didn't know if the other one was as well. But I imagine you'd use the same pattern on all of them, right?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
As for the siding, I'm, I'm not sure what type of development. If it's like a luxury condo townhome place, maybe you do want to go for something, you know, more of a beige color. Otherwise, I, I would use the apartments at Timber Hills as they work. They look like they belong on the, on a hill. So I don't, I'm not opposed to the white, but I mean, like I said, I think it depends on the type of development you're trying to sell.
And again, I think part of its intent, you know, because this went through the SEACER process, and there was an intent when those conditions were put into place. And so if they used earth tone, was it because they really wanted it to blend with the natural environment? You know, normally, we don't put neon on buildings. So kind of what was the intent? And I, I'm going to guess it flows in part from the SEACER process.
Yeah. The most important part of the condition was to have some kind of cohesiveness.
Okay.
So we didn't have segments that were completely out of whack. But there was a visual analysis, and I don't recall myself exactly, but it may be in the resolution. If earth tones were called for, then it's your decision as to whether they satisfy that.
Okay. And then it's just a general comment, because I want to, you know, hit this point, and I think it's a question for Mike and Mark as well, in terms of what was required to be submitted. I'm accustomed to also toward the end and final approvals, especially with site plans, seeing floor plans, just to have a sense of the layout and the entries and part of the final approvals. And also to ensure, you know, ensure that it matches whatever the SEACER analysis was, if there were assumptions with bedrooms or et cetera.
The assumptions are, were limited by the URM zoning requirements, the density requirements.
Okay.
So we can't have more than, I think it's three bedrooms per unit.
Okay. But are they all three bedrooms per unit, then?
Uh, I think so.
Yes, that's what you have in the news.
They may not wind up being three-bedroom if for some reason it doesn't meet the tenant's needs or the owner's need, but they are, yeah.
When you say they may not end up all three-bedroom, you mean they may be less?
Well, yes.
Okay.
Somebody may use it for something else.
Okay, like a den or et cetera. But do normally, are floor plans, do you see the floor plans?
The guidelines would be included as part of the approval, and then it would become the building department's procedure to verify that the individual permits that are issued comply with the, the guidelines in the site plan.
Okay. Can you make it a condition of a final approval that floor plans get submitted? And you don't have to answer necessarily right now. I know this is also stipulation. So what can and can't be requested, you know, I'm deferring somewhat to Mark and to Mike.
The difficulty, the difficulty in asking that site plans be submitted as part of an approval is it makes it very difficult for Ben then, put him in a position where if the architect modifies to some degree the interior layout, but it's still the same number of bedrooms, still the same intent of what you're improving, does Ben say, no, I can't accept the change in the floor plans because it doesn't match with the planning board approved? It puts, it makes it very difficult for Ben.
Are these, because we're, we're seeing a pretty finalized product here. So this is, this is what we can expect. I mean, this is what they're planning to build, whoever the developer is.
Yes. The building envelope will look like that.
So the building envelope, so this building envelope, though, is based on a certain assumption with regard to the interior space? I mean, have, are there floor plans prepared?
So, so what'll happen here, as, as the market dictates, the floor plans will, will evolve.
Okay.
To open floor plan, a kitchen on one side, a kitchen on the other. And that, that responds to the market values and realtors and selling and how that moves through that process. So what we've done here is we've developed elevation fronts that are interchangeable with those options as we go through the project, so that it has a continuity throughout the project. So that we understand that, you know, we understand that there's going to be a garage and, you know, on one side, it's going to be a single garage or a double garage, an entryway, and bedrooms up on the top floor, living spaces on the middle floor. We know that that's how the building is going to, to evolve, but the actual selections will be done per building as they're being built.
So just
So we don't have, we don't have floor plans for particular units at this point.
So in general, on the, the garage level, is it just garage space, or will there be living space behind the garage? And I guess it depends on whether it's a downhill or an uphill unit.
Yeah. So it's going to vary, it's going to vary all throughout the project based on up garage on grades, garage unders, and how the topography sets up. Within the, the unit, certainly, for instance, on the two-car garage, that is over fifty percent of the, the lower level will be garage space, and then utility space and staircases behind it, possibly an entrance on one side for the center units. So there's some circulation and entry spaces going on at that level. And that'll vary. If the garage is up on grade, that'll vary, and it'll just be a basement. So what you're looking at here would be the building that's built into the hill. You have a, a high grade in the rear and a low grade in the front, and the, the basement would be behind the garage, essentially.
And, but there are, are there variations where you come in to the garage at grade, and then there's walkout space to the back?
Yes.
For a deck.
Grading permitting, if the grade permits.
So it could be a situation where there, you have three stories to the back?
If the front is, if the front is buried, the back could be exposed.
So if the front
If the front of the building is a full basement, then the back can be exposed. Because we do have height requirements that we have to adhere to as well.
Right. So if the front is buried, then the garage is coming in at this, kind of the second level?
The garage will be buried because there's entrance from the garage.
On the high side.
Yeah.
Speak into the microphone, please.
So there's going to be entrance from the garage, so that, that will never be buried.
So the garages will, there will never be any, where the garages would be like, almost like at the second level?
No.
Right. You have to, you're always going to come in at the first, and it's going to be
The entrance would be from the garage. So yes, it's never going to be buried.
Okay. So then, so the only options
The back would be buried, yeah. The back would be buried.
So the back could be buried, or the back could be exposed?
The back could be buried.
But is, are there any circumstances where the back of the gar, so that elevation where the garages, where the back is exposed, so that you're seeing three stories?
There could be such instances, yes.
Okay. So that's, is, are those really the two kind of variations?
That's right, yes.
So I think it would be useful to have one more set of elevations showing, if that's the one other variation, showing that and what that looks like. That's what I was asking about the grading. I wasn't sure how things were. So it sounds like it's either, so in, in any instance, you're going to come into the garage, and you're always going to come into the garage. So you're always going to see the garage and then two stories. And then what's different is on the other side, the rear side, you may have an exposed living area at the garage level, or you won't.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
The stone around the garage, does that vary with the colors as well, or is it the same all the time?
Yes, they do. There are different variations. It's a stone veneer, but the style and color will be, will match the other colors on the building.
And building to building, it can vary a bit.
Yeah, depending upon the color palette that we pick for that particular building.
That would be helpful if I gave the board some, and you could sort of take them through one and show them what's in the option.
Sure.
Will it always be stone, or could it be brick?
We've proposed stone.
Okay.
Just for the continuity.
Okay.
And that earth tone feel to it.
Okay.
We felt that was the best.
And perhaps if you have to do additional elevation, and you're contemplating shingles, like a shingle look instead of like a slapboard, maybe you could incorporate that to see what that would look like?
Mm-hmm.
Like a cedar shake, I should say?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if that's what you were saying. That might be one option.
Correct.
For variation.
Correct.
So perhaps the elevation you do for this other alternative, you could also incorporate the cedar shake, just to see a
Correct.
Okay.
And we could also vary the, the three-dimensional rendering that we have here. We can provide you with the color options on these renderings.
That'd be great.
So you can see, so for approval purposes.
Okay.
So you can see, this is what you're approving. These are the colors. This is what matches our chart.
Yep.
And we can provide that to you, just so you have a guideline to work with.
Okay.
And then that, that makeup would become part of the architectural guidelines that we would follow throughout the project.
Okay.
And for Ben's ease of use, we should be able to attach to the resolution a set of renderings and maybe the part number, the cut sheet, but however you describe that roof, the, the shingle by, you know, manufacturer's number, so that we know what it is. Because we don't want to carry around your samples. We want to be able to have Ben look at those samples.
John's got that on the
Correct. We can expand on the list that we've, we've given to you, which does have the colors, but we can also put some more product information on there.
Right. And you could even say, or equivalent, you know, just so, because if there's a you go decide
Just to be market friendly.
Right. So, you know
And then we'll attach a set of the renderings and add to the resolution, so it all goes to Ben that way.
That would be for all six options we get one?
Yes. So, so my thoughts are that we would provide the color options on one rendering. And so you'd have six of these.
Okay.
Basically. And then we'll also do the other version of the, of the garage where, where it's a different grading option.
Right.
And we would just do that as a architectural drawing, not a third, three-dimensional drawing, unless you'd like it as a three-dimensional drawing as well.
Well, let's see the elevations, and then I, I would like to see slightly darker colors. I'd be curious to see what that looks like.
Very good.
Added among this.
Sure.
I think, just again, to see visually what that could look like.
I think that's very doable.
If we have to, because the rendering processes, I understand it takes a while. Are we able to get these to the board for the regular meeting, which is roughly
Fortunately, the, the, changing the colors isn't as complicated as doing a new rendering with a different perspective. So we can vary the colors. Now that we have the rendering understood, and we have the architectural vernacular understood, and the dormers and the windows, we could change the colors to show you the variations, just so you understand how we're, how we're shaping the project.
Okay.
So it's the same body in a different dress?
Yeah. It'll be the same body. It'll be the same architectural, just the colors options will vary.
Okay.
From one to the next.
And we can get that to them for the, you meet on the twentieth, right?
Uh, next.
The regular meeting is on the twentieth.
Right, next Tuesday?
A week from there.
A week from next Tuesday because of the way the month
Oh, the way that the month failed.
Yeah.
Okay.
So John, on, on those six, you would actually identify them as the six options that you have listed on the
Yes.
Yes.
And I think, again, just, you know, I would like to get a sense of darker, slightly darker garage doors, slightly darker, you know, just some darker colors to see what that would look like.
Very good. Okay. We'll take that into consideration.
Thank you.
As we're composing this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Windows, they're all going to be, are those casements? Are those up and down?
It's a varying, it varies. Essentially, the first floor windows would be casement windows, and the upper floor windows, which would be bedroom windows, would be the double hung style windows.
So getting back to just generally the floor plans and the layout, the first then level above the garage is where the living room, dining room, kitchen, that type of space is?
Correct.
And then the third level will be where all the bedrooms are?
Correct.
Okay.
Relative to the floor plans, I, my comment was meant more to what was tied to the stamped approved plans. If John's office has some conceptual floor plans as they perceive the development now, it may be beneficial for the board to see them, but I really hesitate to suggest that you link those to the approval.
Right.
But you could, you could have those reviewed just for general information as to where they believe the project is headed. But I, I really do understand John's comment that they have to match the market as the project develops, because
Yeah, we haven't even developed it at that point.
I've run into that
And kitchen sizes can change during that period.
Right.
I've run into that a couple times where projects have been half-finished and the developer has changed, and they've changed for the market, and the interiors have been changed, and the sales have taken off because they've addressed the current market.
And we're trying to address here is the, the architectural guidelines for the project so that that stays consistent. The internals of it can, can adjust.
Exactly.
Like I said, whether it's an open plan or shifting staircases around and that sort of thing.
Right.
But we want to make sure, and ensure that the exterior of the building is consistent throughout the project as it, as it gets built over the, over time.
How big are each of these units in total? What did they range from?
The, the, the building footprint of all three levels of gross square footage would be forty, forty-two?
Forty-two for the inline units.
Including
Forty-two hundred to forty-nine hundred?
No. Forty-two for the inline units. The outside is smaller. The end units are smaller, four thousand.
And that's all gross square footage, including garage, two-car garage, one-car garage, entry space, staircases, firewalls, all of the components of the building.
Okay. So each townhouse is about four thousand of forty-two hundred square feet? Is that, am I getting
Of gross area.
Of gross, gross
Gross building.
GFA.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. And I understand the need for the market to change, and, you know, layouts will change, and kitchens may go in different locations and et cetera. But I'd like to see kind of generalized floor plans. Not that, you know, again, if you come into Ben and you're meeting the basic parameters of three bedrooms and, you know, I think especially the bedrooms, because the bedroom
You're going to need two, the inline and the end.
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
They're taller roof.
Well, I think, so the only other variation would be those ones that can walk out from the garage. There could be livable floor area on the bottom.
Yeah.
But, you know, again, this is all tied to SEACER and other assumptions. So just generalized, what would these look like? But again, not that the floor plans are going to get attached to the site plans if that's not what was anticipated. not what was anticipated as per the stipulation, and that's already been addressed already. I'd just like to understand the relationships of the spaces in the buildings. Thank you. And, I don't know, any other questions or thoughts on the design, colors? No? Any examples that you think would be useful for us to take a look at, that this is kind of modeled after, in terms of like an existing development?
We can look into that for you.
Okay. I didn't know if you knew, okay. So if you know of any that you think these are kind of the same character of the siding or the colors, et cetera, you know, just let us know so we could take a look.
An example to try by-
Yeah, because sometimes seeing the real thing.
Mm-hmm.
You know, some of the larger projects, I know, is like Ramapo Reserve down in Oakland. I don't know of any, so, I can't think of any in this area, up in Orange County, that have been done recently.
With the earth tone colors, though, that you're looking for something that has that feel to it.
Kind of, yeah, yeah.
With market conditions, not that much was done until very recently.
Which one?
Market conditions. Just, you know, the-
Yeah.
This was, this was planned historic construction in 2009.
Right.
Bad planning.
Yeah, absolutely. That was the worst year for planning residential development. Anything else you want us to be aware of, or that we should be looking at, or that needs to get addressed? You mentioned the four points. I'm, I had circled with this conservation easement. I'd like to get back to the town board with regard to the open space. The water district is still out there, so I will also write a little memo or send an email just saying what's going on.
We have condition, in the current form of the resolution, there are three references to conservation easement, two references to conservation easement, depending on who takes it, and then the third condition relates to if no one is available, to hold the conservation easement, restrictive covenant. We propose to go with the restrictive covenant. If the town board is interested in a conservation easement, holding it, we're willing to do that. This is essentially, what it is, is an open space easement.
Mm-hmm.
It's not really a, it's not the full conservation easement, where there's, you know, protected areas and conservation value land that's being, specific things that are being protected. It's basically designed because we identified this remainder parcel, because of the slopes, as one that would remain open space.
And so nothing's allowed within the open space area?
Access to what is and is not allowed, because that's what's gonna go in that restrictive covenant.
Well, tomorrow, I'll show you the proposed restrictive covenant. I've got it ready.
Yeah, I'd like to see the, right, the parameters.
But it's not, it's not, you know, to protect the carner blue butterfly or something along those lines. It's basically no disturbance. We are allowing some exceptions, I think, if it's necessary in conjunction with the water supply.
Okay.
You know, if you need to get access to something, or put a trail through to do something. If the town were to take it over, we'd like to make provision for that, but it's basically otherwise going to stay what it is.
And otherwise, are there other no disturbance areas, although they're not restrictive covenants? Is it anticipated that-
The buffer area.
The buffer area? And if I look at the water tank, and the space that's between the water tank, and the units that are immediately below that, is that all supposed to stay as undisturbed?
It's very steep. There's nothing that could be done that. It's very steep area.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I'd like to see the covenants, and again, I'll reach out to the town board about the water district and the open space.
So we are hopeful that, based on the work that's been done to date, that we will be able to be considered for final approval this month. A very limited palette. We'll talk more about the conditions. I think you'll see, they're fairly straightforward. They follow from the preliminary approval. They follow from the site plan itself and the review that's been done, but it has been eighteen years. Our client and I are both aging.
I appreciate that. It's a little difficult for us, only because many of us are new to this, and to Mike and to Mark, in terms of what their thoughts are, you know, whether a resolution for final approval's been drafted, and then we'll need to go through it. So, and I appreciate that you want to wrap this up, so-
You'll have one more draft before the meeting. There have been several iterations of the final resolution that were distributed to the former members of the board, but-
Okay.
It's more confusing to look at those. Let's wait till we get the new one, that will be hopefully clearer and more narrow.
Right. And if not this month, then maybe next month, but, you know, we're not talking a year from now. We're talking within the next couple months. But I do want to touch base with the town board with anything that's on their plate.
And we could certainly make provision in one of the conditions for something to be done if the town board wants it one way, and if not, the other way, such as the restrictive covenant versus the conservation easement. I would-
Because that could be a condition of the final approval. That that documentation gets finalized.
We would do one or the other, depending upon what the town board-
Right, and we won't-
That's really the way it reads now.
Right. And we won't sign until one way or the other it's done.
Well, it will be resolved, it'll be, I mean, the, the only thing is, we need to say, they have to do something by a certain date to-
Yeah. Because in the past, they haven't said yes or no, they just don't answer.
They don't-
Right. No, and I appreciate that. So I think if we don't hear from them by a certain time period, we just move forward, but-
And just so you know, with the letter we sent to the town board, I asked if they would give us an indication or authorize its consultants to conduct a review, to do something by the February 1st, because we're hopeful of proceeding forward with you guys. My understanding is they have not been in touch with the engineer or the attorney.
When, when, in general, when I've reviewed other plans, when does the HOA documentation be done? I mean, normally, I've also seen, you know, the planning board attorney take a look at it.
They're done by the town attorney in our code, but-
But it's done by the town attorney?
Yeah.
And has that been done? Has any been-
It's a condition of the approval.
Okay, so that'll be a condition of the final subdivision approval, that the town attorney review any HOA documentation? Okay.
There's different points at which-
Yeah, for some of the SEACR measures, I look at it to make sure that they're incorporated, but in terms of the general outline of it, I think the code provision and the practice here for the town attorney to look at.
Okay. But that hasn't been submitted at this point?
No.
Okay. All right. And so, yeah, I think we just need to look at, go through the conditions and see what, what's outstanding, and then what can be incorporated into the final. Thank you.
Thank you.
You don't look that old, George.
Applications, or did they get it in the package yet?
No, not in mine yet.
Okay. So we'll send an email to you, just to let you know what I'm even referring to.
Okay, you want all mine to go to them now?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Because it will come-
I only sent what we've been doing.
That's fine. And it will come back to us, so we might as well get to them. And, and the reason I was asking, because I did receive that package, I wasn't sure where they were in the process, and it seems like that stipulation has certain timeframes. And I just don't want to run afoul of the timeframes, and at some point, we'll definitely want to speak to you with regard to the implications of some of those timeframes and requirements, like, you know, there's references to if you do a POSDEC, then it seems like the agreement's, you know, out the window. I don't know if I'm reading that correctly or not.
I'd have to look at it again, Bonnie, I don't exactly how we drafted it. It's been so long.
Okay. And well, so they're not on our plate at the moment, so we'll handle it when it comes in. All right, thank you.
Technical conferences on Friday mornings. Generally, the concept on those, just so everybody understands, is that we don't receive submittals in advance.
Right.
And it's not intended that there be any, you can't take any action, because it's not a board meeting. The intent is more that applicants can come in and ask questions, review the code, and leave hopefully with more information than they came in with.
Yes, exactly.
So that they can have a more complete plan when they do make a submittal.
Right.
So we really don't look at those conferences to, to move the project forward procedurally.
Right.
But more help get complete and accurate plans submitted.
Right.
And they have the resource of having Bonnie, myself, and Mike available, so that, and even as well, Ben Maldonado, if a code issue comes up.
Right.
So that they can hopefully get the plans correct, so that when they come in, things will move a little more efficiently.
Right. I believe they're noticed, in the event that for some reason, everybody's interested in a particular project, and you all want to show up for a tech meeting. But again, there's no obligation. It's up to you. I know everybody works. I'm taking a little time from my job to do it, and, you know, no decisions are made. But it is useful, if someone's submitting a first application, to say, hey, there's a wetland here, or hey, this is gonna be an issue, because there's a ridgeline, and it's gonna be a preservation area, so-
And even for ongoing, ongoing applications, it helps as well. In the case of Bald Hill-
Right.
They're on tomorrow, so we can go through the resolution-
Okay.
And, and make some progress on what items are complete, what items need to be modified or addressed. I think we should have Noreen create a, and I can get something to you, a schedule sheet, and either have half-hour or twenty-minute slots-
Yeah.
For the larger projects. You may end up coupling two slots for one project.
Right.
But that way, you could actually fill in a blank, and then-
Right, I was a little lost for this one. It's what I'm expecting.
I will, I will, I will get you another blank sheet. And usually, what happens is, the day before, or two days before the technical conference, you shoot that out to, at minimum, us, so that if it's a repeat application, we can bring that file with us.
Right.
Okay.
So it's a-
Now, I had a woman come in, and I didn't know what to tell this poor lady. She has property she wants to buy that they want to subdivide.
Okay, see, like, please.
I'm sorry, forgot. A woman stopped in the office yesterday, and she wants to buy a piece of property and then subdivide it, because it's like four acres, or something too big for her and her husband. They wanted to know what they had to do, and I told them that we have this technical review board now, that for her to figure out what everything is that she needs, that maybe she should come before you guys first. Is that what I'm supposed to be? I don't know what I'm supposed to be putting-
There's a gray line. We don't want to have the questions that could be fielded by Ben, or by your office, saying, here's the code, here's the information. Have everyone who comes in with a question come to a, the technical conference-
No.
Because then we'd have to have three days of conferences every month.
Right. Well, I think that, and also, you know, someone may just have an idea, and they come in, and we have to be mindful that there's costs associated with the reviews, and then they never submit. So I think, you know, if there are questions, you can always direct it to me, and I'll try and respond, but-
Okay.
You know, maybe we could at some point develop a little bit of a pre-application fee, where if they're serious, and they, they will pay a certain amount, you know, to, to just, yeah.
Normally, if they have a consultant on board, they're spending money toward a goal.
Yeah.
So usually, if it's a consultant involved, you know, it's a kind of a real project.
Right.
It may never develop.
Well, she came into the building department, and our building department is, he's on the, he's not in the office. So the other gentleman wasn't 100% sure, and he brought him down to me, and I'm like, well, I have a board meeting this week, let me get some answers for you, because I don't know what to tell you. And she says, well, I'll come back to you next week. And she took my number, but she wouldn't leave me her name.
Okay.
So, but she had a survey of the property-
Okay.
That they're serious of buying, don't know if they can-
Do you have the ability to scan it in?
She didn't leave me anything yet. She didn't even leave anything with the building department.
Oh, okay. Do we have a scanner? I mean, if you wanted to scan?
No, not that big. The biggest I could make is that little map that I gave you before.
Okay.
Yeah, we can't make anything bigger than that.
I know Ben's not available for tomorrow morning, but I, I think we'll work with him, so that-
Yeah, I think he should be the first.
We can come up with a good relationship, where he can take those general questions between yourself, Noreen, and Ben-
Right.
Get those answered, and let the workshop be used for real projects.
Yes.
Right. Well, I told him I needed to find out what it was all about, because this was the first one, and I had no idea.
Okay.
So I said I'd get, and they said I, she'd call me back.
So if she calls back, then we can direct her to Ben?
Right.
Or, and you can send me an email. You can always provide me with the lot block, section block and lot, and kind of general parameter of what she wants to do, and, you know, we'll try and respond as we can.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
Yeah, because we want to be, you know, responsive to, to people who just have questions in some way.